Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Right, welcome to the meeting. We come to the first one item on the agenda to elect the chairman town mayor for the year 2022, 2023. Nominations to be made. Anybody got any nominations? Yes Catherine? Seconda? All those in favour? Thank you very much. You need to sign this so. Here's your agenda. So item three to present the outgoing chairman with their past chairman's badge. Item four to elect the vice chairman for the year 2022, 23. I would like to nominate Peter Bishop. All those in favour? Peter, would you like to come and join me here? Before item five, I would just like to thank the council for placing your confidence in me to continue the ongoing work that this council is doing for the community. I'd like to thank the outgoing chairman Jane for her hard work and support for the town during her time in office and I look forward to continuing working together with the council. I'd also like to thank Peter, finally agreeing, to be a deputy chair who I also look forward to working with over the next 12 months. We have a strong and enthusiastic council currently and the strong support of the paid staff and officers which I'd also like to thank. And now on to item five to accept apologies for absence. And number six to note declaration of members personal judicial and disclosable pecuniary interests in respect of items on the agenda. Yes Beryl? Did you get number 90? Keith, are you going to declare anything? With the planning, are you, or are you going to do that when we get there? Okay then. Number seven, the minutes of the previous meeting to confirm that the minutes of the meeting held on the 26th of April 2022 are a true and accurate record. Is everybody happy with those? 7.2 to receive an update on items from the previous meeting if not agenda for items for this meeting. Same thing Jane?
Other than in your agenda pack, I don't think there is anything. The planters that will come up on the agenda later on, but we have had the invoice through and they will be on their way as soon as that's agreed and paid tonight, I hope. The one issue we might have, and perhaps I'll talk to Peter about this later, we have got the tank at the tub that's usually outside the wall here. Personally, I think it looks better without it and I don't know if it encourages perhaps people to wee up against it, which is what ladies in the cottages next door are complaining of, so maybe it's something we can think about. And Liz, I think she'll probably talk about that at some point in the future, but with the rainwater harvesters, I wondered Liz if we could put things along this wall instead perhaps, but again, that's something for the future, but nothing more than that.
Point eight, the chairman's report. There wasn't, no, there's no chairman's report. And again, with the vice chairman's report, there isn't actually a report to give at this meeting. 8.3, the clerks report.
Again, I think it's in your packs unless anybody wants any update on anything that is in there.
Is everybody happy with that? 8.4 HR committee report.
It's a written report, it's been circulated, yeah.
Has anybody got any questions on that one? 8.5 the finance committee report Catherine?
The finance committee report has been submitted and I think people have had copies of that.
Is everybody happy or any questions? 8.6 the cemetery working group. So to you again.
Hasn't met this year Chair.
That's a good sign, I hope. 8.7 the Watten neighbourhood plan steering group. Everybody's seeing that.
I think we just copied the link, the link to the report that David Dent gave at the annual town meeting and he's happy with that.
Yeah. 8. oh sorry Pat, yes.
Well, we haven't got any further with that, it's just been distributed today, so there's no further update on that at the moment.
8.8 the churchwalk working group.
As it says on your papers, we've met several times to think about the land ownership and responsibilities. I can see that that work is going to go on throughout this year and I think that's later on on the agenda, we will be talking about that and I guess we're probably going to have to have more meetings of that group.
Thank you Catherine. 8.9 the museum for Watten working group.
We have met during the years Stan, but not since the work began on the project and the project is coming to a close now and should be done, Chris hopes to be unveiled with you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, through you, thank you very much Catherine, I was a tad confused.
8.10 the Lockmeeaton working group. That's Jane. Is that Jane and?
What does that mean? That's you? We did have a couple of meetings with the, with one of the members of the trust to talk about the trees down at Lockmeeaton and there was a decision by council to do some work on the embankment to remove trees and that was carried out.
8.11 Charlotte Harvey Trust Management Committee.
The management committee has been meeting regularly, myself, Don, Pete and Sue and you have had a copy of, there's a link to the report that was given to the annual town meeting and we have had the trustee meeting tonight and I would like it ministered that we, we'd like to give our thanks to Sue for all the work she's been doing to take us forward in, I don't know, revitalising this Charlotte Harvey Trust and all, all the work we can do from there.
Any other reports? Liz, do you have anything to report or? Sorry Jane.
That's okay, it's just a point I wanted to raise regarding the emergency plan working group. We did set one up, there were two councillors on it and Liz was also a member. It's come out of the flood group looking at all options. We did actually agree as a council some terms of reference for them to function, so that, that's the last action we've taken, we haven't had another meeting yet and it will come up later on because we need another member, one's resigned.
Thank you Jane. Item nine to note the Pepsco quarterly report which is in your pack. Is everybody happy with that? Item 10 to agree representatives to outside bodies and lead councillors. Am I? Have I got the list of those or is that, oh, I do, it's in the package. So is that, this bit down here or have I got something down here? Current reps we've got to start with are? Is that? All right. Sorry, just. Right, the current reps for the Chamber of Commerce is Pat Warwick. Are you quite happy to continue?
I think everyone's just happy that people continue that.
Yeah, and you're quite happy to do that. The twinning association, Pat, are you quite happy to carry on on that one? And myself on that, I've noted that the mayor's president of the twinning association. The patient PPG group, Pat, are you quite happy to carry on on that one? I can see a pattern here. The Norfolk ARC, Pat, are you quite happy to carry on that one? The men's shed, that's a vacant one. Would anybody like to become a rep for the men's shed?
I do actually liaise with people in the mansion although I haven't actually gone to it for quite some time since it relocated to its current position, but yeah.
I think that makes you eligible. Would you like to become our representative king? Thank you. The snap meetings, shall we have Pat Warwick? Are you quite happy to continue with that Pat? The Watten Sports Centre, that's James at the moment, are you quite happy to carry on? Thank you James. And the cadets, Keith, are you quite happy to carry on with those Keith?
Absolutely, I mean the next meeting we've got is at the end of this month, if anyone is interested, I can get, give a report back afterwards, but yeah, I'm quite happy. I should point out that I haven't had the results of the vetting, you do have to be vetted. I'm assuming as I hadn't heard anything for some while that I passed, but I wouldn't have to chase that off, there is always a risk that they might say, we've looked at your past Mr Prince, we think you're a national security risk, but yeah, no, I'm quite happy with that and so the next meeting is the end of the month.
Thank you. And then any council nominated trustees will continue as trustees until either their term of office as trustee ends or they relinquish the role. Under that I've got the emergency planning group, are you quite happy to continue?
Yeah, I am quite happy to continue, but we could do with another councillor.
Anybody else like to join the emergency planning group?
I mean the idea is that eventually it will be all civilians and it will be handed over to legs of its own, but we did have Chris, but Chris resigned, so.
Stan, are you putting your hand up to volunteer?
Madam Chair, through you, could a clerk check him, why are you on that committee? Okay, yeah, I'd quite have to step forward and assist you Jane.
Thank you.
Thank you Stan. And then the current lead councillors, Breckland District Council is Don Sanders, are you quite happy to carry on Don? Planning, Jane, are you quite happy to carry on? Thank you. Cemetery and grounds maintenance, Peter. Fireworks, Stan, are you happy to? The festive market, Beryl, thank you. The antiques fair is Tina and she's not here tonight, so we just assume that that one's fine. Public toilets, James, you did get all the best jobs, don't you? The bike, the bike event, that again is down to Tina, I just think she'd be quite happy at the moment, yeah. Heritage, Catherine, are you quite happy to carry on as the heritage lead? Thank you. Market again is Tina Cadell, we'll check with Tina please. Provision for the elderly, Pat, are you quite happy to carry on with that one? Thank you. Social welfare, Don, are you quite happy with that? And youth provision, Pat, are you quite happy to carry on with that one? Thank you. Thank you all for happily volunteering. Yes Catherine?
I was just going to add that when we conceived the idea of having lead councillors, we did say that if there were particular interests that councillors had or particular gaps that they saw, it's quite legitimate idea if you want to come forward and say you would like to take a lead on an area, because I know we've had some Charlotte and Toby have now joined us and I'm sure that they've got areas of expertise that they would like to share with us and there's no reason within our constitution that they shouldn't be able to do that.
Thank you. Anybody else, or you're more than welcome to think on this as to whether you'd like to join any of those committees and perhaps that Jane know in the office. Item 11 to note terms of reference for HR and finance committee, NP steering group and working groups. So item, are we quite happy with the terms of reference? Item 12, we come to the committee members. So 12.1 to elect HR committee members. And currently, oh, thank you. We've got Peter Bishop, Beryl, Pat and Stan. HR committee. And then to elect a chairman for the HR committee. Yes Pat?
Yeah.
Do we need to have a vote on that? All those in favour? To elect the finance committee members. And we've got Peter as chair of the HR, Catherine, myself, Pat and Don. Quite happy with that. Quite happy to, yeah, anyone else can come on to that if you want. Toby would like to, yeah. Thank you Toby. Catherine, well, sorry Pat first. Oh, I haven't got to that bit yet. Yes Catherine?
Is that my agenda, do we need to agree the remit of the, of that as well as the HR one?
Yeah, it was all done as one.
I'm too slow tonight.
So 12.4 to elect chairman of the finance committee, Pat, what would you suggest? Are you quite happy to continue Catherine? All those in favour? Thank you.
Can I just say Toby, we do have a meeting on 30 Thursday afternoon, I will send you agenda if you can't make it, it's a bit short notice, but I'll let you know.
Item 13, the working group members. So 13.1 to confirm council members of Watten neighbourhood plan steering group. That's the current one is Jane, Pat, Keith Gilbert and Catherine. Are you all quite happy to stay on that one? Thank you. To elect churchwalk working group members. And at the moment that's Catherine, Keith Gilbert and Stan. Are you all quite happy with this Catherine?
If they are willing, could I also ask that Jane and Pete join us on that purely because with the legal issues we've been dealing with recently, they, they've been there at meetings with a solicitor and it would be helpful to the group if they could continue that role.
Would you like to? Thank you Jane.
Thank you.
Item 13.3 to elect the cemetery working group members. And that's, yes, please note that all councillors are members of the cemetery working group. So they're down to scale. 13.4 to elect market working group members. And again, the working 2021, the market group, market working group is called as necessary as a task and finish group. So at the moment, I don't think there's anything with the market, is there? And 13.5 to elect museum for Watten working group members. And existing at the moment is Catherine, Beryl, Stan and Keith Prince. Are you all quite happy to continue? Thank you. Item 14, sorry.
Just wondering as we haven't got the working group for the emergency plan and we need one other councillor for that working group. Oh, you've already done it? This is the one that's came out of the neighbourhood plan and that was what you were going on? Ah, right, thank you.
Yeah. So item 14 to appoint councillor as internal control officer according to the financial regulations 2.2, currently that is Peter. I'll second that. Are you quite happy?
No, I don't mind them, there's somebody else suggesting to do it.
Is anyone? All the, all those in favour of Peter continuing? Item 17 is public participation. We just go back a little bit. Item 15 to confirm bank signatures. And with the different bank accounts that we've got, at the moment for Barclays, we've got Keith Gilbert, Margaret Holmes, has she not been taken off?
Do you mind if I just say, this has been ongoing for quite some time because of issues, I think over Covid and people having to go into the bank, so we've not ever managed to change our mandate and we did wonder if this was a time that maybe we think, and Jane I think was put on as chair, whether Jane you still want to be or whether we put Sue on now as chair, that's why we put that on the agenda really, just to see how you want to move forward.
Is it two signatures?
Take Margaret Holmes off and Daniel Christian off.
And for the actual signing, is it two signatures? So would there be a conflict of interest with Stan's being on there as well as myself?
I don't think it would be, we're trying to avoid perhaps the two of you signing together, just the Michael's issue, but it's really, we just need to replace those two. I think it was going to be Jane, I think we were going to put Pat and Tina on.
Not on the Barclays one, no. You're on the Unity one, but not the Barclays. So that would be Pat and myself then, yeah. And then the Unity Trust Bank is Jane, Scarlett, Michelle, Tina Cadell, Peter Bishop, Beryl Bunnin, Keith Gilbert and Pat Warwick. We've got sufficient there. You're Barclays, I've not got you. Item 16 to agree that accounting solutions will remain as internal auditors for Watten Town Council for 22, 23. Catherine?
I propose that we accept that.
Seconda, Don? All those in favour? And then item 17, public participation, this. Can we make that an agenda item? What part of June is better for you Liz? That's one, do you, that'd be all right to put that on the agenda? Thank you, Liz. Margaret, did you want to say anything for you? Could, sorry, can you just let? No, just going to get your speaker over here.
Margaret Divine, chairman of Watton Twinning Association. We have 22 visitors coming from VISA in June. And although things haven't been normal for a few years because of Covid. The norm is that because the two councils are actually twinned and signed the charter 35 years ago. That on one of the mornings, which will be Saturday, the 18th of June. That the council have a meeting, just a small meeting for about an hour. Um, here in the chamber. And we normally give them coffee, maybe a little bit of cake or a scone or something. And it gives the chance for our councillors to meet our German visitors and vice versa. Um, so we'd like that to be at 10 o'clock in the morning on the 18th of June. Um, for about, for about now, you know, enough time for coffee and something. Then the plan is after that, that we go downstairs and we listen to the town criers that run that day. Then I've got a small itinerary here. Starting from the beginning, they arrive on the Thursday about 11, 11.30 at night. On Friday, we've hired a coach and we're going to Penstall for the day. Followed by Hand Stanton. We have five children that will be on this trip. Um, so we need to entertain for the children as well as the adults. So also our German visitors love the seaside. Because where they live in Germany, they are nowhere near the coast. So they just love the seaside and the fish and chips. So, uh, so that's Friday all day. Saturday, 10 o'clock in the town hall, town criers. Then we're going on to Thetford, Charles Burrow, Dad's Army, Button Island, just to kill a few hours. And then in the evening, there's the open house at my house at 7pm. For drinks and nibbles and all the councillors are invited to this. Okay, to be our guests for that evening.
Margaret, on that, would you like RSVPs?
Um, yes.
Details of numbers?
Jane's got an invite there. Um, and it's got the RSVP date on there. They've got my mobile number and my email. So I'd like to see as many people as possible. Good turnout is always very nice. On a Sunday, they have a day with the host family to entertain them. However, time to get, you know, together, talk about everything. And on Monday morning, I'm afraid about six o'clock, six thirty in the morning, they go back to Getafe. Um, so that is the trip. We try, as I say, it's the first time we've had children, young children. So we have to entertain them as well. So we're looking forward to this, they said, we're looking forward to be able to come to the town hall at 10 o'clock on a Saturday morning. Now this year, we'll say, is our 35 year celebration. Normally every five years alternately, we have a big celebration. And this year it would have been our turn. But with the problems with Covid, we normally, we would have a tambourine band come over for the celebration. They didn't want to travel. We normally have the mayor and the clergy from the church because we normally incorporate a church service. So a lot, and we send invitations, twinning, to Norfolk County councillors, other councillors. And we have quite a big celebration. But unfortunately this year that hasn't been possible. So we're just going with our normal visitor. So, um, on Sunday, this Sunday coming, I believe you all had an invitation to come to my cream tea. Um, which is 2.30 in the afternoon. You're all invited as our guests to come to the cream tea. As many scones as you like, tea, coffee, there'll be a quiz there and a raffle. The money that we hope to take from this, you don't have to pay, you're our guests. But the money that we do get from this is going towards paying for the coach trip. Because the coach this year is £450 for the day. Which has gone up quite a lot. I believe the last time it was 300. So, but that's because of fuel and everything else. So, um, I look forward to seeing as many of you as possible. Would be nice if you could come and introduce, they all speak English. All speak perfect English and they like to practise their English on us. So except me because I go on talking a bit cockly. So, um, so I look forward to seeing you at the cream tea and at the open house. And also on the Saturday here. Have anybody got any questions that I'd ask?
I was just looking at the Saturday 18th of June. They're coming into here and we're going to have refreshments and so on. Have you spoken to Chris Hutchinson in the museum? Because I'm sure he'd be very happy to make sure there's people available to show them the museum on the Saturday morning. Yeah, if you wanted to include that in it.
Um, obviously this has all changed from when they were here last. Um, they did see the museum when it was downstairs, but they haven't seen this. And I know it's in that room as well. So, I mean, yes, they can mingle around and they can have a look. I mean, they're very interested in everything that we do. They love museums. The reason I'm taking them to Penstall is because when we go over there, they always take us to a big nature place. Whether it be in Germany or Holland, we've been all over the place. They just love nature. So I think they'll really enjoy Penstall. So, um, and also there's things for the children to do there now. So, but no, they'll be, they'll see a great change when they come in here. They won't believe it actually. I didn't believe it. It's the first time I've been in it for a few years. So, yeah, so yes, they'll, so they'll be free to walk around, see the museum, see the town criers. And then we'll have to pop off for a few hours to see Thetford. So, are there any other questions? Yeah, Jane, right, this one, yeah.
I, I was wondering how we, or if we could tie in the food that's going to be on for the, um, town criers. With your guys, and I'm thinking that, that the twinning will.
Will be gone, but, will be gone by then.
Okay, so.
Speaking of the town crier, I mean, he's, I will get his number from you because I'd like to invite him to the open house.
Yeah.
And he could come to that and just, you know, just have a little ring of his bell and say a few words, you know? Also, I've got one other thing that I'd like to bring up. I found out a bit about today. Um, my members have been telling me that the beacon has been moved. Now, the beacon was bought by Twinning for the millennium year and put where it was. Now, I understand that the hockey club aren't happy with it being there. Um, because obviously there'll be sparks and everything else. Um, the actual year it was put there, it was never used anyway for millennium. Because there was that incident of that girl being murdered in Watten. So we didn't, we decided that we wouldn't use it and the council decided we wouldn't like it. But it was lit one year. And the fire cell, I think, they put carpet in it. And what happened, the carpet caught light and the fire was great. I had to put it, hold thing out. So, um, we, I understand it's been moved and it'd be nice. Um, no objection, no objections to it being moved. And I hope its new location will be better for it. But I would have liked to have been kept in the loop, you know, so I could let my members know what was happening to it.
Pass that over to Pat.
I apologize for that, um, that's my chairman, that we agreed to move it to a safer position for the, um, for the occasion. And then it will be moved to its permanent.
Which is in the middle of the lock, I believe.
I believe it's going up in the lock eventually.
That's the plan, if it works.
That's good, that's great. But it would have been nice had, had somebody had told me. And then I could let my members know because, you know, they see their, their dogs and that. Where's it got, you know? Um, also, I think before it's lit this time, there should be some wire netting put inside.
It will be safe.
Because otherwise everything will fall through. Um, and not a carpet. That's okay, okay. Um, well, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for listening.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And just, just before I go on to my point, um, is it recorded anywhere that we're the poshest parish council in the country? Because we put carpet in our, our beacons. Um, Madam Chair, could I, um, suggest that this council, um, has a record of our appreciation of the continued work Mrs Divine has done with the, uh, twinning association? Without the hard work and tireless effort, I've no doubt that the twinning would be on its knees now. I for one have had a visit to VISA with the twinning association and seen the work from both sides. So I'm, I'm proud to have a town that has a twinning association that works as hard as this one does.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Item 18 is to agree the purchase of a 2022 Christmas tree at a quoted price of £1,195 plus VAT.
It will be our usual contractor who will supply the tree. And I think we're hoping we will get sponsorship and that has been confirmed. That's what we will be paying.
All those in favour? Item, sorry, Beryl. I think I can confirm that the Christmas tree is sponsored. Thank you, Beryl. Item, if you'd like to know where it's the bird that's sponsored. Okay. Part of the town. Yeah. Um, item 19, to consider hosting a reception event for visitors from Visa on June the 18th. Which is what Margaret's just been speaking about. Um, are you all happy that we hold a host here at 10 o'clock in the morning? All those in favour? Thank you.
I think when we've done it in the past, the council have normally presented them with something. Um, have we got, do we know what we're going to present them with or?
Any suggestions? Jane?
No, I wasn't going to suggest anything other than perhaps we do need to set a budget. I don't know if the council was going to pay for the refreshments as well. Something else we were going to perhaps talk about tonight. Just to be thrown in the mix as, for the event perhaps.
Again, sorry, I don't know what kind of thing. Um, I think, yeah, we should pay for the refreshments. And if, if Margaret can advise us on what would be advisable to give them. In fact, they've got children here as well, so we, we've got just adult, not something for children. But would it be possible to buy, um, to present them with, I don't know. I wondered if Chris has got any paintings or anything of the town that we could present them with? Because that might be something nice.
Yes, Pat? Yeah, we're not too late for the, the agenda if we just do it as a, a party.
Uh, we can discuss it on the finance agenda because we have, um, the item which is issues as of the council meeting. So we can pick it up from that.
Thank you. Yes, Stan?
Yeah, Madam Chair, um, I, I appreciate your concern about the timings for meetings. But we still have the clerks', um, budget that could be used without authority from council.
Thank you. Beryl, Margaret's just told me that the former burgomaster will be coming over as well with them, which is the equivalent of our mayor. Item 20.
I'd just say before we move on, that the 18th is the day of the town crier event as well. So Sue was thinking of sending invitations out officially to councillors and others. So that it's really just a date for your diary that there will be the reception at 10 o'clock. And then the town criers event following on from that.
Through you again, Chair. Well, is the town crier, uh, what are they doing in the morning? Could he do a cry for Visa? Because if he could, that's something that'd be printed off and given to them a, as a gift.
Pat? But the visitors for Visa won't be there. It'd be something nice for if they were here, but if he can't do it. Stan?
Yeah, Madam Chair, the Saturday night, the evening of Margaret's opening event, the town criers having a formal dinner at the Brum Hall. Uh, we were invited and you have all saw the email, of course.
It's the Friday, Stan.
Is it the Friday?
Because it clashes with Hand Stanton.
Well, we're busy both days unfortunately. But check your emails, top tip.
Chair, can we ask then that the finance committees to look at setting a budget for the meal? Um, for the food, perhaps Margaret can advise us on what we might want to give. And then they can look at exploring a gift for, for, for our visitors then.
Yeah, thank you. Are we all happy with that? So item 20, to ratify the order for new planters for the High Street. At the cost of £15,224.26, including VAT. Yes, Catherine?
Normally, uh, we would have had the quotes, uh, we would have come back to the, the main committee. And had that agreed through main committee. The problem we had was we'd agreed in principle that we were going to have the project where we replaced the planters and the bins. Um, street furniture on the High Street. Will was going to take, the contractor was going to take the old planters away. Just make them look a little bit better for the jubilee, bring them back planted. Unfortunately, when he took them away to do the refurbishment, they're not in a state where that can happen. So what we had to do was make a decision about bringing forward the purchase of the new planters. Um, because otherwise he won't be able to get them ready and planted for the Queen's Jubilee. Which is, which is what we'd agreed that was our target. So, um, the, the order went ahead and what we need now, uh, is for the council to ratify the decision and the order for the 15,000.
Yes, Pat? Can I just, Beryl's got to have. Any other questions before we go on? All those in favour? Item 21, to consider refurbishment of public toilets. That was in your pack. Do you want to speak about it?
Nothing much more to say other than what is in your pack. And we have had some issues recently with the current contractor.
And we have had some issues recently with the current contractor. Probably verified. Although at the moment, again, we seem to be okay. But it's something we really do need to take on board, I think. One, the contract, current cleaning contract, and two, possible refurbishment, perhaps sooner than we were anticipating. But I think I've pushed that back, I suggested we push that back to the Finance Committee again to look at in a bit more depth, particularly the contract. We have got now about four quotes, alternative cleaners. So, it's something we need to move on.
Yes, Catherine?
I'd like to support Jane's suggestion that we do take it to the Finance Committee because we'll need to look at this in terms of the three-year projections that we've been putting together. And the refurbishment of the public toilets is on that. But I think we may need to prioritise that in light of information we've had. So, we may need to look at the whole of the three-year planning in total and rejig things. So, it would be helpful if you can go back to the Financial Committee and then we can bring forward a recommendation.
Item twenty-two, the planning. To consult on planning applications received since the last meeting. Yes, Keith? So, item twenty-two point one, planning three PL dash two, two zero, two two dash zero four, two eight dash HOU. I wish she was up here, Jane, because I'm probably not saying these right.
Can I suggest that since Jane agreed to be the lead councillor for planning, why not let her deal with those three items? And you haven't got to read all those numbers out and she can deal with it.
Jane, would you be happy to continue with talking about the planning? Phew, thank you. Pat? Jane, would you like to take over on the planning, please?
Okay, so now we've got twenty-two point one. Three PL twenty-twenty-two, zero four, two eight, HOU. Remove and block up existing bedroom window to the side of the house and install new single-pane window one meter to the right-hand side of the old one. New window is intended to be a standard height, capable of being opened to allow airflow with frosted glass. That's two railway news. Any comments? Didn't think so. Twenty-two, twenty-two, two, three PL twenty-twenty-two, zero four, five, four, HOU. Single story front extension to allow for porch area, store cupboard and WC, thirty-seven A Accretory Square. Any comments? Didn't think so. Twenty-two, three, three PL twenty-twenty-two, zero four, six, nine, HOU. Proposed direction of bay window to the front of the property, twelve Blue Bell Close. Any comments? No? Okay, back to you, Dinka.
Item twenty-three, a resolution to exclude the press and public to consider. May I ask the public if they'd like to leave the hall now and carry on? Thank you. I don't protest. Yes, okay. All those in favour? Thank you.
The clerk's going to turn the.
Yes, Keith?